She's working from home.
Good evening, it's 5:30. We will be having an informational session tonight. First topic will be the public safety building space needs study. And we have Bruce Schwartzman here from BKV. And then after that, we will be looking at amendments to the food truck ordinance. Welcome, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. We're very excited to have this chance to work with all of you and as well as work with the Fire and Police Department. Should I start over? Anyway, we're very excited for this opportunity. And this is the kind of work we've done for the 43 years that we've been in business doing fire, police station, fire and police stations and kind of mixed use public safety facilities has been really one of our focuses for many, many years. So I think tonight I'm here for the, at the council's leisure to answer any questions you all have about the study. And the process. Or if you'd like, Mayor, I could do a little debrief. I didn't even think about it. If you want me to do a little summary.
I think, yeah, I think a short presentation or summary and then let it let us derive questions from that maybe.
Sounds good. Excellent. So, you know, in today's world, especially when it comes to firefighting and police, it's all about training. There's a lot of things you can look at in the fire service industry that have changed over the years. And one of the main one that's even come up at a state level is the issue of carcinogens. And the individuals that helped to protect our homes and businesses put themselves in in kind of a tenuous situation, a lot of times when they're exposed to carcinogens out on the job. Fire stations of the past did not, did not allow for the proper control and air movement of carcinogens within a station and the firefighters and what they were exposed to. Newer fire station design really does take into consideration the the proper airflow, the proper decontamination areas. And the whole idea is cancer initiatives to try to minimize the exposure of the firefighters. In addition to that, you know, you have, you have paid on call firefighters. So they're at the stations. So response time, of course, is critical. And locating a station that best serves not just the majority of the city now and the expansion of the city and the required ISO kind of timeframes. But also looking at the long term and how you achieve that. The other thing when it comes to training and firefighter is, is having that ability to train, whether it's tight confined access ladder drills, rappelling. Class B smoke rooms where they're having to crawl through there with their tanks and their, and their protective gear. Those are all the things that you can build into a station to give them the tools needed to properly respond to a situation in the field. Those same training techniques are critical for police as well. We see time and time again that we, we all expect police officers to make a split decision, the correct split decision. In a very high tense situation. The more training they have, the more situational awareness they have, the better off they'll be to able to serve our community. So you know, we've done facilities with firing ranges, we've done facilities with tactical clearinghouse training areas to allow them to run maneuvers and drills. We've done simulated rooms again to allow for proper simulated training. So there's a number of things that can be done on the police side as well to make sure that the officers that are in the streets are properly trained and have the the background and the information needed to serve it. So having said all that, some of the things that we do. So as we start the process, the first thing we need to know is, is your department. You know, the kinds of calls you have, kinds of fire calls, kinds of police calls and understand the operations. Where do you want to go from here? What do you currently do? We see computer forensics, of course, has become more and more a big thing. Some of that, of course, is handled at a state level. But what do you do from a police side? What do you do from a fireside and understanding your operations? Taking that information, reviewing it and analyzing as we go forward to make sure whatever's planned for a new facility takes into consideration. Not just the operations now, but how you might be changing in the future. So we do an operational assessment. It's part of the report. We write it up for the fire, we write it up for the police. We talk about how they currently are and ways they might change in the future. We'll look at space programming. So the next step is, okay, what size facility do you have now? What types of spaces do you have now? And what kinds of size of space, what kinds of types of space do you need going forward to properly accommodate the training, the living, the equipment again? Fires, Fire Department, big portion of that space is, is your, is your apparatus, your trucks. Do you want inside squad car parking for your police vehicles? There's things like Narcan and some other things nowadays that having those squads in a conditioned indoor space is critical. When we did the Rochester Police Department. A portion of that building is inside squad garage. When we finished Fridley's combined fire recently, again, large portion of that was inside squad garage. So having those appropriate spaces and what they need for that. So we go through that. As we go through that, we're also gonna, we talked about having a tour with your departments of some other facilities, other new facilities. And the good thing about the tour is it helps us to look at, if we say that a space should be like a fire bay is going to be 18 feet center to center. And it's 80 feet long to accommodate trucks. What does that look like? Or you have a training room to accommodate 100 people. What does that look like? By taking the tours, we're able to go with the departments and really say, here's what we're talking about for you. Does that work for you for now and in the long term? So the tour has actually helped to confirm the areas that we're looking at in the space program. So we'll put the space program together. And with each piece of this too, I do want to say that we do like to come back to the council and give you a debrief of each end of the piece of the study. It's, it's important in our opinion to have you be aware of all the steps, not come back at the end and say, here's how big the facility is, here's what we're looking at. But really to go through all the various steps as we develop. So then there's a space programming. Again, we also do a comparison. So we take other cities of comparable size, comparable police departments and fire departments and look at their areas of those, of those various facilities. And the, the whole goal of that is to show you that what we're, the space that we're programming with your departments is in line with what other cities have done as well. There's always some nuances here or there. But if you know you're dealing with a, a fire department headquarters that's handling the majority of their equipment. And it's 18,000 to 20,000 square feet, we can show you other city facilities are right in that range. Again, it gives you and the community the reassurance that what we're programming and what we're planning for the size of these buildings is in line with, with what's appropriate for other communities as well. So it's a back check on what we've done. So we complete the space programming. The, that's the facility size comparison that was stated in the proposal as well. And then the location analysis, from a police standpoint. You know, we've done police stations where the idea of community policing is very, very important. The more that the officers that are in the field are engaged with the individuals in the community, the more they're aware of what's going on, there's awareness. We have located police stations sometimes in higher risk neighborhoods, things like that. That's a discussion point that's kind of not the biggest thing. The, the driver in a public safety facility is really where the fire department is. They need to be able to respond to all the various parts of the city. A lot of times it's the, if they're going out on medical and, and fire calls, a lot of times it's the senior center or the apartment facilities. It's the high volume, high use type areas where they a lot of times need to be close to and then highest response. So on anyway, understanding those locations and what we do is we take all the data from the calls that you've had over the last couple of years. We insert that into kind of a GIS mapping system and we're able to understand where the options are for, for the location of where the fire station might best respond. And then we marry that up with the police and say, does that make sense from where you should be as well? A lot of times it's from major thoroughfares because you want to make sure that those trucks get out promptly and quickly throughout the neighborhood they need to, they need to serve. So anyway, we do the location analysis. Once we've, once we've got the, the sizes nailed down as far as the potential facility, then we start to develop concept plans. You know, knowing if I assume that we'd be looking at a drive through bay for the fire department, you know, how many bays do they need for their equipment? Where does that layout? Where does their response and training space layout? How does that space marry up with the police department? So you could have maybe shared training capabilities or shared training space between police and fire to take an economy of that space for the two departments. So we do some concept layouts to help to get a size of the site that'll best accommodate that. And then after we do the concepts, then we go from there right into really cost estimating and funding strategies. So we can develop, we can develop what the cost of the facility would be. And we use a lot of historic data. Construction industry these days is absolutely crazy. I mean, materials have been spiking all over the place. From all the construction managers and contractors we deal with and material suppliers, we're hearing that as we go into 2022. A lot of these spikes and irregularities will kind of level out. So we're anticipating, but we'll go ahead and do a fairly detailed cost estimate of what the building would be. So there's the construction cost for site prep in the building. And then you'll also see what's considered soft cost. So architectural engineering fees, furniture fees, anything that's not nailed down to the building, the testing. If there's sack and whack fees, soil and water fees associated with the building, all those ancillary, ancillary costs that are outside of construction would be in the soft cost. So we'll put that all together. And then a lot of times in most of our projects, you know, it's one thing to sit down and say, okay, here's the cost of the building. There's, there you are. We like to help and work with our clients to, to implement some kind of strategy plan. What, what's the financing strategy? You know, are you working with a bond council and what's that impact to that cost to that facility? First off, how's it going to blend in with other expenses that the city has and other, other costs and other things that are going on with the city? And then in addition to that, how do you, how do you look at the tax impact and where does that fall for the certain sized city or certain sized facility, I should say? And then we kind of pull that together in a final report and put a bow on it and make sure we've hit everything. Now, one of the things too is we do like to think that we're pretty nimble and flexible. So we always, it's no clients ever the same. I'll be, and that's part of the fun of it. Everybody has different needs, different, different demands for some of the project. But as things come up, if there's things that should be looked at, but we haven't thought about it, we're always game to do that because again, we want this facility to serve all of you and your departments well. So I think, I think I've kind of hit with some of the information.
If I could, Mayor, Mayor and Council, Bruce, we really appreciate your opening remarks. We're going to take about another 15 minutes. You're going to be here for the council meeting as well. So when this item comes up, if other questions occur to the council, you can certainly ask at that time. I just want to start by saying it's, it's really important that we don't focus on the end product here. Everybody wants to talk about where's this thing going to go and how much is it going to cost? We really want to take a thorough look at it to arrive at those, at those answers. And that's the plan that you've laid out at the committee that, that met with you and other companies. Or you were chosen is because we feel that the process that you follow is going to really be good for us and the best for us. And that financial piece at the end as well is going to be critical for us, of course, to understand as well. So again, I just want to caution the council, try not to focus too much on where's this thing going and how much is it going to cost? We'll get there. It's really, do you want to do this study? Do you like the way that it's laid out? Do you think it'll get to the right answers that you're going to need or give you the answers you need? Questions to make those decisions in a few months' time when this, when this is over with.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Eileen.
Just you sort of touched on this, but one of the things I would be really curious about is maybe not necessarily similar public safety buildings that your firm has worked on, but seeing some examples of similar size, once we have an idea of what we're looking at. Similar size or functioning facilities for similar sized communities, I think would be really helpful for me personally. So I'd be interested in that.
Steve? Here we go. Okay. Thanks. City manager, sorry, if you could help me remind me of a conversation that you and I had, I'm new, so I, I need to be up to speed. You had talked about some of the capabilities that some of our, our teams have that, that tend to sometimes travel outside. City limits even, I think, outside the county. Can you list what some of those are? Help, help refresh my, my memory on that?
And the two chiefs can help as well, but outside of the city, we like to feel as though we have a regional approach and a reach. Our hazmat team has responded not only within the state of Minnesota, but in the surrounding states as well. We have a building collapse team. We have a high angle rescue team, swift water rescue team, just a regular water rescue team. ERT for the police. I'm not sure what else you guys do this sort of outside. There's mutual aid calls and that sort of thing that typically happen. It's primarily more of a regional asset for fire than it is for the police.
And, and to be clear, what we're, what we're proposing would encompass those, those items, those capabilities would we, would be housed and located in, in this, this possible building, right?
And we'd like to be able, I think we'd like to be able to offer regionality to a training facility as well. So we could invite other departments that are in this area to come and train here. It's good for our guys to, to work with other departments. And it's also good for them to have a, a close in location to do some of that training.
So if I could confirm with our representative here that, that you, you have experienced then with, with buildings that, that would encompass some of those. Some of those items, some of those, those skills or services.
More, more and more, a lot of our facilities, we just completed one for the Wright County and FBI that was a tactical training facility. It had a lot of law enforcement aspects to it, but almost every fire station we do nowadays has a lot of built in training characteristics similar to what you talked about.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Pam, you had a question?
Yes, from the questions I'm getting already prematurely, but from the questions I'm getting already, I'd be very interested in the pros and cons of housing the police and the fire together. So if you have examples, if in your study, you could draw out examples of if there are, I can understand that there are benefits, but if there are.
I think, and each department's different. It really, and you don't want to, you don't want to predicate being married or attached at the hip based on the chief's getting along, you know, because a lot of times chiefs change over time. It's what makes sense operationally. Fire and police really do have very distinct and separate operations. However, there's space within the building, the lobby, the reception space, major training rooms. There is some space in the building that actually could serve both departments. And if you separate the buildings, even mechanical spaces that support the overall building functions. If you, if you separate them, then you're almost duplicating some of that space. So from a, from a purely efficient standpoint of space. And we find a lot of times that you're saving space by combining them together versus separating.
But we're not going into this saying that that's exactly what's going to happen. So we are certainly keeping an open mind that they would be separated.
Yeah. Kind of along those lines, I think, I, I, you know, city manager mentioned that we, we shouldn't be laser focused and on cost and lose sight of everything else when we're looking at this. But something I would be interested in, I think the community would want to know is, once a thing is built or whatever it is that happens. What are the ways in which modifying from what we, how we operate currently will be more efficient and save the community money in the long run? As far as if we have all of our, or many more of our police vehicles in a garage, so there's less wear and tear while they're kept, you know, all of those kinds of things. I think that updated facility would, um, there would be a lot of savings once it's in existence.
It's a good point. And utilities.
George here.
Go ahead, George.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think both chiefs, I know for certain will agree as probably the presenter tonight as well too. The fire service and the police service from the 50s and the 60s and the 70s and the 80s has certainly changed as we're into the 2000s. I know different tactics, of course, take place and different equipment, a big change in equipment. Now, as this study goes forth, so as we're looking at this. You know, looking at a combination, if that would perhaps be the, you know, the thing that, that would fit it best. But we would also, if I understand this right, be looking also in your study that two separate buildings could be possible as well too?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Bruce, I have a question for you. Who, who all do you consult with generally? I mean, obviously the chiefs and their staffs, the city staff, council. Who, is there any other outside? Opinion that you look for or who are you generally working with when you're, when you're going through these consulting processes?
Well, we, we use a lot of national standards to look at things, you know, we use, so there's a number of outside things, but we don't really don't bring them in. When we're looking at evidence processing, we're familiar with Bureau Criminal Apprehension, the BCA requirements for what they require for evidence. We have Kalia standards for law enforcement and things like that, that we may talk about, NFPA standards for fire department, those kinds of planning. We really don't bring in outside consultants from that standpoint. We do will utilize sometimes when we start to do the cost estimates, I'll start to talk to some construction managers I know and bounce some things off of them and see where we are from a number, but we really don't utilize them independently. So there's no real outside from an internal standpoint. You know, when, when land is looked at, of course, we would talk to your, your, your planning department and with the lands and the setbacks and the requirements and the various aspects of land when that comes in as part of the topic. During the initial process, in addition to the police and fire chief. We, you know, we, we a lot of times do like to talk to the various line crew as well, try to engage them in the process. Employee retention is such a critical aspect these days, no matter what you do. And, and especially in the, in the firefighting and police world, you know, trying to get new recruits and trying to get people that are excited and staying within their careers that they've chosen, within the departments that they've chosen. Engaging them in some of these conversations about what they see as what would be helpful for the things they do, we find has a lot of value to it. So in addition to the police and fire chiefs, we, we look at talking to some of their staff as well and discussing some of that. I think that's the primary ones we'd be talking to.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Bruce?
Mayor George here.
Hi, George.
Bruce, how long will it take to put this study together?
We had identified initially October, so we're at, is that about six, seven months or so? I think it's probably about a six, seven month typical process.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that's a pretty big time frame.
Yeah, actually, right now, we're probably in the five month timeframe.
Okay.
George, there is an anticipated timeline, page 159 in tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Just for reference.
I have my agenda right in front of me here, but it just.
It's a big agenda. So I can see how you might skip over that one.
Yep, Michelle Alexander.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I just want to say that in sitting through the process of talking to the companies that applied. I can't say enough how wonderful I think BKV will be for the community. I think part of what drove, drove us towards them versus the others is not only their vision, but their ability to work with our community. And so I was just very encouraged by what they had to say, their timeline, their costs. And the way that they focus in on, on the question that we asked them, which is, is small really when you get down to it. A needs assessment isn't the whole package of what exactly the building is going to be looking like or where it's going to be. It's really looking focusing in on what, what would work for what our community needs. And so I, I just can't say enough about how wonderful I thought they were as a, as a company. And I'm pleased that they're coming before us tonight for consideration. That's all I have.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Bruce, the one thing that I think everybody in this town is going to mention to you is the train tracks.
Train tracks are always an interesting and impact.
Yep.
Whether or not they dissect a town from response, or whether or not we had one in Detroit Lakes where they're actually concerned more about derailment than they were of how it divided.
Sure. Yeah, first one more than anything else.
Good, good.
I know, I know we've taken steps in the past to try and mitigate or reduce response times because of train waiting potentially. But that, that's a big one usually, one that we hear a lot about, let's say that. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Need to leave this one or?
Red? Yes, you can just leave it. Next item.
Okay, we'll move on to amendments to the food truck ordinance. Monica will start us off.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I provided both via email and I have some hard copies here tonight, just some summary of what the current ordinance reads and some suggestions, suggestions for the council to consider. We thought we would present this to you in an informal setting and then present a draft ordinance to you at the following council meeting. So there's four different areas of the ordinance that we'd like you to reconsider. The first one is the requirement for a fixed operating restaurant within the city. Currently, any licensee who wants to operate a food truck on city streets and parking lots must need to maintain a fixed operating restaurant within the city. That of course would limit how many food trucks are available to operate within the city. So proposal would be to remove that restriction. We feel that would bring in more food trucks into the city. The second area is where are they permitted to operate? Currently, and I have a series of maps. For operating on city streets and parking lots, there are specific areas in downtown and at Lake Park and at the Kiwanis Shelter at Prairie Island. Those are the only three areas that they can currently operate on city streets and parking lots. In downtown, it's Third Street between Johnson and Kansas and at the Levy Parking Lot, both East and West and on Cal-Fremling Drive. As well as that half block area on Main Street leading into Levy Park. At Lake Park, it's on the one stretch of Levy, of Lake Park Drive by the Ballfields and the parking lot near the Banshell. So those are the current locations. A couple of options for you to consider would be, one, the second map shows a larger downtown zone. That would just be the river to Fifth Street and Harriet to Kansas. So food trucks would be permitted to operate on public streets and parking lots anywhere in that area. That's one proposal. This, and also then anywhere at Lake Park and anywhere at Prairie Island Park. With the exception of Prairie Island Campground, that would be with the permission of the operator of the campground. The second proposal would be just to open it up to have them be able to operate on any city street or parking lot throughout the city, so not just in those designated areas. Yep.
If there was, if there was an organization like Winona State University, I mean, I guess they have big parking lots, so they could go in there. But if we just went with the downtown option, then a food truck couldn't just pull up like on Mark Street by the university.
If they are, I guess we would need to reconsider because we do have public streets that go through Winona State. Currently, when Winona State has an event, they utilize their own parking lots. So that would be something you want to discuss. How we want to write that in the ordinance of if that area needs, and also at the West Campus. Do you need to have permission from Winona State to operate on their campus?
Yeah, I think that would need to be addressed because you look at like game day experiences where they're on the public street in between Winona State blocks. That should probably be somewhat clarified.
The next area for discussion would be the permitted hours. Currently, the downtown Third Street area is permitted between 8:00 PM and 2:00 AM. And that is to obviously get the, the bar crowd, so to speak. Cal-Fremling Drive and Levy Park is 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM because that is considered city park. And all other locations in the city are also 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. A proposal might be for the downtown zone to have 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM in that entire area. And the rest of the city, the 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then the license fees, currently we have two types of licenses. A temporary permit allows up to seven days within the city. That's $50. The annual license is March 1st to October 31st. That's $200. I would note, we have not raised that fee since we've implemented the food truck ordinance many years ago. We're looking at maybe a proposed one day permit for $25, just to give operators a chance to see if, you know, try out the city for a day and, and see if it's something they want to apply for a temporary or an annual permit. So those are just some ideas that we're looking for feedback from the council on what you would like, if any changes or if more, just it's your, something to work from.
Go ahead. Either one. At your convenience.
Okay. I, I have a question on food safety. So obviously that, that would be. Okay, I, I have a question on food safety. So obviously that, that, that would be important consideration. If, if we're, if we're, I think, opening things up and I, and I think about, you know, the one day permit and I, I don't wonder if there isn't some sort of a connection between operating a, a restaurant. Having, having a fixed location and you're obviously then familiar with, with food safety regimens and rules. What are we doing to ensure food safety for the public?
Sure. So the, I did also consider sending you the entire current ordinance. It is quite lengthy. It does address food safety and other requirements such as making sure they empty their water containers every day and have garbage containers and not have music blaring. We do require that they have the state food permit.
Okay, 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 okay.
Yes, first of all, I'm very excited that this is here. Thank you so much, Monica.
Not just me.
And everyone else. Yes, I know it's been a big group effort and I've asked about it a million times, so this is very exciting. I'm super in favor of eliminating the requirement to have a fixed property because that opens up so many more possibilities. Many food truck operators do not have any plan at all to have a brick and mortar store. That's not part of their business plan. And it also allows for a lot of entrepreneurs, which as a city, we're very encouraging of. And it also encourages competition, which I think is very healthy for our local economy. So thumbs up to all of that. I am wondering a couple specifications if we were to go with the, having a downtown zone. I'm curious about if people would be allowed to pull up under the bridge and operate there. It seems to me that would be an ideal location, other than someplace like Levy Park where you're downtown, but kind of off of the street. But wondering, because I know there's a, it's a little bit of a ramp under there, but I don't know. I would just want that clarified so people know yes or no if they can do that.
I'm going to defer to Chad on that one.
I'm guessing it's a no, but it, it's nice and wide open and I think it would encourage people.
Mayor and council, I should defer to Brian DeFrang. We likely would ask for MINDOT to have like special event permits. To, you know, so if we wanted to have like a food truck day, that they could operate in that location. But on a daily basis, just, you know, going into the plaza and parking. I mean, the short answer is no, we'd want some obviously control over that. And I would, and can only assume that MINDOT would as well.
That makes sense to me. I just, it's in, it's in the big red block, so. And then another question I had is just, I haven't looked at the ordinance in a while, but what are, what are our requirements of insurance for food truck operators? Is it still like a million dollar policy?
It's got to be at least a million, I would guess.
I would assume so. Okay, just wondering about that part of it.
Is Chris Hood on? It's whatever the statutory requirements are.
Okay.
For, for municipalities. There's Chris.
Which is one million, five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. And that's all the questions I have for now.
Michelle, can Pam go real quick and then I'll grab you? Excellent, thank you.
So I'm very much in favor of changing the food truck ordinance. I think these are, this is, this is a great change. I, I would be in favor of the, the B proposal, any street or parking lot. In terms of where, where people could go. I think that other parks might have an interest in having food trucks for their events, for their neighborhood events as well. So I think spreading it out would be, would be a good idea. And except for that, I concur with my fellow council member and when might we be changing this? When would be the?
We would get your input this evening and direct it to city attorney tomorrow and hopefully to have it on the next agenda. So it is an ordinance, so it would go the first meeting in July and approved in the second meeting in July.
Hey, maybe we could have a food truck festival.
Late July, early August.
We can get everybody up and running by then, sure.
No pressure.
Yes, no pressure.
I wouldn't, the food trucks are a permit that just come into the city clerk's office and if they have all the application materials or all the requirements met, we do issue those licenses without needing to come back to council.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a question.
We're going to grab Michelle real quick. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One, like Pam, I would rather this be citywide, even if we have two different times where they cease operation. Simply because I've wanted this for a long time, but the pushback we always got was that we're focusing all of the food trucks in the downtown. Which puts an unfair burden on the restaurants down there, at least that's the perception they have. And I also feel like as a truck owner, perhaps there are locations where they might want to go. Like down near Peerless Chain and Windcraft, that they might want to have a day where they set up outside of those businesses. I know some of them allow them to come onto their property and have a day where they operate, but maybe they would like to get a wider group of people on the, the west, the east end or the west end. Where we have some businesses that are congregated in a location. So my preference would be that we do it citywide. I know that one of the other complaints we got is people thought they would park in front of their house and I just feel very strongly that there's a reason why they would park there, i.e. thousands of people that might want to come and eat from them. It doesn't seem likely that they're going to park their truck in front of your house and try to sell burritos. So I don't have that concern. I, I believe they're going to go to the location that provides them the best possible outcome for income that day. But the other part I'm questioning is if they're in a downtown location, there are two hour parking restrictions. I'm assuming that this ordinance is not looking at removing that restriction just because they're a food truck. Is that correct? So if I wanted to park in front of Boob's, for instance, for two hours, that would be the limit of the amount of time as a truck driver I could park there. And then I would be required to move my truck to another location for the hours.
Correct. Mayor, I think in this it said something about a hundred and fifty feet away from from a restaurant operating during those hours.
Yep.
Right, so that, that example, but parking, yes, you're, you're right. In two hours or wherever, yep.
Just so Aaron knows, one of the arguments I made was the hundred and fifty feet, but the, the business owners didn't feel like that was very far. So I, when I say in front of it, it's tongue in cheek because they, if they can see the truck from their front door, they feel like it's too close. So I'm just, I'm just clarifying for the public that we're not lifting parking restrictions for these trucks. They're not going to take up two or three parking stalls downstairs, downtown for an entire day. They have to locate themselves in a location, either A, where there are no parking restrictions, or B, where maybe there isn't a parking attendant that comes frequently because they're in a lot that's unused or not heavily used during the day. I don't know. I just want to make sure that that's clear to them and to the public that, that this isn't like we're just giving them a free for all in, in restricted parking.
And we do have a number of twelve hour parking stalls throughout the downtown.
That's true.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Aaron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the annual license fee. Is that concurrent with other cities our size and throughout the state for that fee? Or, you know, I've heard both arguments that that's not enough for a food truck or that's too much for a food truck. I'm, I'm just curious where the two hundred dollar for an annual license fee kind of came from. And if we look at maybe increasing that fee to be more in more along the lines of what other cities our size throughout the state are charging.
So when we set the fee, it was similar to what other cities were charging. There weren't a lot of other cities that had food trucks at that time. And I guess, I don't know that it's really relevant what cities throughout the state are charging because it's more what's in our corner of the state. I know, I, I think the nearby cities are a little bit less, but they're smaller cities. So we're a bigger market, so it's really.
So we're right in line. We're, we're right in line. Nobody has the ability to really say we're way out of line either way.
I guess the way I would answer it is no one has complained when they've made their application that it's too high.
Okay, okay, that's, thank you.
One thing La Crosse is doing though, I think they offer up to seven days for free, just sort of a trial. So there are some things that are changing out there. Maybe what we can do is just touch base with some of these other communities real quick as part of this upgrade process and then we can at least come back and say, no, we're pretty much in line with everybody. Or here's a couple of options maybe council should consider.
To that end, I was, I was going to say that I like the proposed one day permit for twenty-five dollars. I think that for food truck owners that maybe don't want to do the full annual license, they could try it a couple of times and then maybe it's worth it. So I, I really like having that option and there was something else. I don't know. Just that I think that, I know there are some businesses that have concerns about having food trucks. But I know from trying to get food truck owners to come to Winona for events that it's extremely difficult unless they know there's going to be a captive audience. So I just want to allay those fears that they're not going to swoop in. Usually, event producers have to sort of entice them in with some promise of there's going to be X number of people at this event. But this will make it a lot easier to bring food trucks to those events and it's a nice way to and it's usually things that we don't already have in our community. So that's the other plus, just to quell any fears that anyone might have.
George, you got some, some comments there?
Yes, just to comment on that, talking about if I had a food truck, I would by all means be up and down to residential neighborhoods. Because you get there around five o'clock to six, you would be selling a lot of sandwiches for supper. And back in the seventies, we had the Mr. Softy truck. He sold a lot of ice cream. That is all, thank you.
I see, I see Chief Williams nodding his head furiously about Mr. Softy.
George, I'm looking forward to that retirement plan where I see you out in the Mr. Softy truck. Ice cream.
I'll just tell you where I'm sitting on this. I, I like all the proposed changes, B, any city street or parking lot. You know, I think if there are any fears about, you know, noise in a neighborhood or whatever it might be, I think a lot of times, as Eileen stated, a food truck's not going to be somewhere where they're not going to make money. And, and if they're not, you know, if they're sitting in front of someone's house and there's noise or whatever, then there's an enforcement piece to it and we'll have to, you know, figure out the correct processes for that enforcement and what the penalties might be. But I, I truly don't see that as an issue. Being a business owner myself, I, I'm not going to try and, you know, squeeze blood from the stone essentially by sitting out in a parking lot and trying to get six people to buy dinner from me when I could be someplace else that might be, I might be more well patronized or, or busier. You know, in, in terms of the, the times, I like those times. I think those are appropriate. It matches up with the park and our downtown businesses. In terms of the one day permit, maybe, I don't know. I, I guess I don't really have an opinion on that. I don't know that, you know, I, I feel like fifty dollars is a small enough fee that, you know, if, if they are coming for one day, fifty dollars should not make or break that business generally. But if I, if there are instances or examples of other communities that have had success with a one day permit, then I'd be in favor of it, but I wouldn't say it's a deal breaker for me on this at all, so.
Just for the record, yeah, I, I would be also in favor of, of proposal B. I'm for competition. I'm for, you know, allowing these food trucks to try it out and, and make the most of their opportunity. I like the one day permit as well. Just seems interesting to me. Give, give people an opportunity.
Sure. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, Mayor, George here, just one more question.
Absolutely.
I know when we started this food truck ordinance, there was a gentleman, I can't remember his name, he did the wood fired pizza. Would he be involved in this as well too? Would he be allowed to go to spots and sell his pizzas?
I believe so.
I believe he would. I know Tom personally and I've had discussions about him with his advisement on what he thought a food truck would do. And I, I think I can safely say a lot of what we're stating in here is what he would recommend as a food truck owner. After my multiple discussions with Mr. Babler.
Sure.
So I think, I, I agree with most of the council here. I think this is really good.
Unfortunately, I don't think the way he is currently operating meets our definition of a mobile food unit.
Why not?
Because it's not an enclosed food truck. So we would need to also amend. And the, the reason we wanted it is a mobile food unit is they can, you know, quickly drive away.
Yeah, I think he's a trailer.
I guess we'd have to look at, it's been a number of years since.
Yeah, I think that would be a good, good thing to include, you know, some sort of definition as food serving device.
Say a definition in the ordinance. It would be helpful if he he, if he can. Well, I, I can send him what the current.
Yeah, I think we can reach out to him to, to be somewhat inclusive on those sorts of things also.
I wasn't aware of that piece. I think, you know, like I'm also envisioning like barbecue pits, you know, that are generally trailers. You don't want a large coal fired, you know, or, or fire inside of a truck necessarily. I, I could see where that might be an issue, but maybe something we can look at in, in that ordinance.
I think one of the main issues is the safety aspect and the food handling. Some of those others that aren't self-contained in a truck, they're not, they're not subject to the state inspection. So whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's safe in that regard, that they, they've gotten the certifications from the state to be able to operate.
Interesting.
And mainly because none of us are, you know, health inspectors. So we really rely on getting the state food permit and then we just piggyback off that. Unless you want to send one of us to become a food license inspector.
I, I just think, Mayor, that we need to be inclusive of those type of food distribution options also.
Yeah.
You know, the fire pit, the woodshed pizza type thing, the.
Yeah, but ultimately, safety of food is.
Right, as long as they're state permitted and inspected and stuff, obviously.
Yep, yep. Good point. Thanks for the question, George.
Chad has it.
Chad, go ahead.
Mayor and council, thanks. Just one quick note that we discuss in, in staff, based on what I'm hearing tonight, that the option B may be the way you'd like staff to continue that. One, one comment that I would make is that we would like to craft the ordinance as well, that there would be some some ask of the mobile truck unit if they're going to be in a park setting because of private rentals in our facilities. You know, somebody very well could think, oh, today would be a great day to go down to Lake Park and there's going to be a lot of kayaks and paddle boards in front of Lake Lodge. But that, there'd be some, you know, some communication of, okay, today, you know, we've got a school group coming down and you know, we need room for a boss, that kind of thing. Or, oh, I've got a private rental at the J C Pavilion for a company picnic, but it would be really great if we parked on the other side because there's a softball tournament. Well, so there is a little bit of nuance there. We just want to mention that. Because again, option B is, that's fine if that's the direction. But just that there is a little bit of nuance specifically with the park system because of our rentals.
Yeah, and a lot of time with events, there are already agreements with food vendors. I know you deal with that. I deal with that with Trinona as well. So we wouldn't want to necessarily be infringing on our partners as we're doing that.
And again, from a park standpoint, we think it's a great idea to, again, as it's been stated, if there's a chance to go to a neighborhood park, because some businesses could go in and use the park, of course, we, we want the park to be used. But just, just as a comment about that, about some nuance there about the park system.
Sure, go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. Chad, do you already have a plan in place on how to deal with that? Because you're correct, if any of us technically want to use the park for something beyond, you know, a visit, we have to get a license agreement or we have to rent it or we, we have to do something more than just have a permit from the city. Can't, I mean, you know, to operate a business, I can't just take my business down there tomorrow and decide. Can't, I mean, you know, to operate a business, I can't just take my business down there tomorrow and decide that's where I'm going to operate. So are we looking at doing something different with the parks where they have to get permission for the weeks that they're going to operate there? Or how how do you envision that being relayed to the truck owners?
So Mayor and Council, Monica and I and her staff have talked about within the permit that they apply for within the city that there's a notation on there to, if they plan to use the park system to contact Park Rec and then, of course, we have the master schedule uh to give them that information. So maybe not necessarily each time, but that when they apply for the permit, that there be some notification that you should discuss or make contact with the Park Rec Department um on days that you plan on being in the park system.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll wrap up this informational session and we'll get back together in about ten minutes here. It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you are asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so you're easily identified. Tonight, I've got just a couple of comments. Um the one first and foremost in my mind is Steamboat Days. Uh congratulations to Winona. I know the Steamboat Days Committee uh worked hard uh to uh they were extremely flexible with the end of the governor's mask mandates and also some of the restrictions on outdoor um events, and I think they did an excellent job of doing their best to to make it as as normal as possible. And uh I had a great time. It was really heartwarming to see the or a large portion of our community come out um for the parade, the carnival, the events, the music. It really was neat to see everybody out and about again. Um it was like our town reopened again after a year and a half here, so really exciting to see that. Um in the past few weeks, I've been, I don't know if it's that time of year, but I've been attending some nonprofit dinners, some fundraising dinners. And uh I'd like to uh personally thank Project Fine and also Habitat for Humanity for their uh events that they put on. At this time, when we are coming out of the pandemic, I think it's extremely important that we try to support all of our local nonprofits as much as possible. We should also be looking at supporting our local businesses whenever possible. I know that's not always feasible, but it is something that I think we I I want to reiterate. It's something that um you know, we have a strong community here, we have a strong economy here, and we want to try and keep things going. Um especially after the year that we've had. So again, thank you to the to the community. Um and thank you to everyone uh for all the great things that they've been doing within our community lately. So, thank you. City Manager Steve Sarby.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh first off, want to wish a happy birthday to my son Nathan. Hopefully there weren't too many broken windows around uh Westfield today as he was playing golf and enjoying his day. Um and then secondly, although we don't normally like to ask council to participate much during these uh comment periods, uh staff is really uh needs some input on what we're going to do with electronic meetings as we go forward uh past July first. The reason for that is we're already starting to put notices out for meetings after July first when the rules change. And uh we know that uh Zoom has been an important thing for us to get through the pandemic. Um however, with the governor's changes and reversion back to the open meeting law, it presents uh us some, you know, some questions about whether council wants us to continue in the subcommittees uh and and the committees of the council to continue to operate with Zoom. We also apparently will have web stream on our on our website. Uh so if if it's not allowing for two-way communication, maybe that's convenient enough. I'm not sure. Um the reason is we really need to know what your point, what your like us to be able to do with public input, whether it's online, if you want it in person, uh the way that it has been in the past. Um we have staffing issues if we're going to be doing a lot of things online and allowing them to be online for all of the committees and the commissions. So Board of Adjustments, I think, is one commission and committee that that is almost always has public hearings, so there's public input. Uh if we're going to continue to use Zoom, uh we need extra support, I think, to continue to do that. Is there any any feedback?
Go ahead, Eileen.
Um I don't know about the um individual commissions. I think they would know better what kind of how often they have input, but I think at least for our council meetings and for when we have public hearings, it's extremely valuable to have um technology that allows uh people to join in from wherever they are. I think that requiring people to come in person assumes a lot about people's avail- um availability and their ability, um whether or not they feel comfortable. Um many people still have autoimmune issues that prohibit them from being around people. Um and I think that any opportunities we have to open up um public discourse, we should really take advantage of. I know that there is extra uh people power involved in making these um hype meetings hybridize, but I think it's been really valuable and I would like to see that um there are still many avenues for people to give public comment.
So you're open to public being able to comment online even after July first?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve Young?
You know, I I appreciate those comments and you you helped me think through some some of the importance of offering uh an electronic method. Yet there's something about face to face. There's something about about being present um that 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 whether it focuses the issue, focuses the conversation. And um I I don't want to lose that. You can you can hide behind Zoom. Um I I may have been on meetings where I've where I've hidden behind Zoom when I was listening to something, okay. But uh uh um there is something about about the importance of of looking somebody in the eye, really in the eye, not not through a screen. And um it's it's um yet I I appreciate the the previous comments and they they have some, they carry some weight. Yet I I don't want to lose the importance of having to face somebody face to face when perhaps you you don't agree. Um this is something that's being lost in our entire society, uh uh getting along with people when you when you when you don't agree. And sometimes having to sit next to them, sometimes having to sit across a room from them facilitates that. That, yeah, we may not uh agree, but yet we we must uh conduct this meeting. So I I I would lean towards uh uh face to face.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Pam, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to know what you mean by it would might require additional staffing to handle online participation.
Uh Mayor and Council, at at these meetings, Bradley's available, uh to be able to monitor uh the Zoom calls. I think early on, we had folks uh that were coming online that weren't any part of the conversation. Or they call it Zoom bombing or something like that. Anyway, it gets to be very disruptive. Again, for for council meeting, it's one thing, we have Brad here, but we have several other committee and commission meetings and to expect to have an extra staff person at each one of those, because it's really hard to run the meeting and manage the online content at the same time.
And and some commission meetings run at the same time too, so we might have to have two staff members. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I think that that shifts my point of view a little bit because I I think that having online participation for city council meetings, especially when we're discussing issues, that we have a lot of people that might want to, might want to speak, that would be very, that would be very a positive thing. But to have uh like the environmental quality committee, I know there's so many committees, to have them be online and require uh assistance, that doesn't seem practical at all. So maybe I I'd be in favor of cutting it off at city council.
Aaron, do you have a opinion on this?
Boy, everybody makes a valid argument here. Um when I first read proposals and stuff, I am probably more in favor of uh in person. If somebody wants to come to a council meeting and and view their stuff in person, I think that's the way it should be done.
Okay. What about commissions and boards?
Commission and boards is is difficult to um. Again, I'm I'm a favor of in person, you know, unless they're specifically on the agenda and they need to be talked to and they ahead of time, they say, you know, I'm unavailable to get here, but since you need me at this meeting, I can be online.
Okay, very good. Michelle and or George, do you have, do you want to chime in on this? Go ahead, George. We'll get you, Michelle.
No problem.
I would like to see, as my screen is flickering out here, I don't see anyone now. But uh you know, I kind of would like to see both ways if they could still happen. All I know for a public hearing, if I had something that I wanted to state, I would be a lot more comfortable coming to the council chambers and stating my opinion on that. I think it makes a little stronger voice, whether you're for an issue or against an issue, whatever it may be. Now, like you say, in July, uh all of council now will all be returned to the to the council chambers. I went out shopping today. I got a couple of new shirts. So I have to get the right size and uh say I have that, but you know, I I can understand that, let's say, for some odd reason, I cannot be at this public hearing. Maybe my job is taking me somewhere, maybe uh, you know, maybe I've had something happen in the family, whatever it may be. They should have an opportunity, I think, to be able to zoom in and say what they want to say. I know there are some people that uh, you know, that that would have that case, so uh I'd like to see it all, you know, face to face, but if that option's there, maybe for one or two people, they should be able to uh participate.
Very good. Thanks, George. Michelle?
Um I'm in favor of returning to normal. I think if the governor has said that's how we should move forward, if we are all returning to normal, I think that that is what we should do. And if we're in person, they should be in per person. And I'm setting aside coronavirus as kind of an anomaly, but prior to this, the the same people that have gotten accustomed to Zoom, like myself even, have had medical issues or disabilities or um mobility issues that might have made it difficult for them to come. But when the issue is important enough, part of why we make the hearings the way we did, the way we've done them this way is because you're you're asking that person that's either going to complain or support to do it publicly and to do it where everyone can see who they are, so that they're not, as I think Steve alluded to, hiding behind something. And there's something about that that is, as George stated, very powerful. When the people are in your presence and you're in theirs and they can see your face and you can see theirs and um I think even if people, you have to schedule life around these things. If something is important enough to you, you are going to show up for it. Um if you have some major life thing that happens, then probably whatever was at that public hearing lost some of its importance to you. And that's the reality of life. And I think it's unreasonable to ask those committees and subcommittees and commissions to try to to maintain this at any level, but at the council, they do have other options already. Not only can they reach out to each council person prior to any meeting and talk to us about any issue that concerns them at any time, not even just about public hearings, they can email us. They can also write letters that become part of the public record, that become part of our council packet, so we know what they're thinking and feeling. So there's always been options available for people, but I'm strongly in favor as a retort turn to as much normality as possible because it's something that we've lacked over this last year and a half. We've become separate from each other. We've lost that contact. We've lost that neighbor connection. And the further we remove ourselves from those people, the less they become real people to us. It's like watching YouTube. They could be anyone, anywhere. And I think we have to make this a priority for people. If it's important to you, you you should show up for whatever it is that's important to you. So although originally I was on the other side of it, I spent a lot of time thinking about this as July first is about to roll around and that's just where I come down. I think we go back to the way things have always been and we abide by the regulations that have always been there and the rules and and the way that we've we've functioned in the past and and hope that we we get back to normality as a city.
Thank you, Michelle. Go ahead, Eileen.
Um I just wanted to clarify what I mentioned, that I I don't necessarily think there's a need to have Zoom for every single council meeting. I I want to be specific that I think it's a that it would be useful for public hearings specifically. So if we have a meeting where we don't have a public hearing, then perhaps we do not need that. We know ahead of time when those are going to happen. We know then that what the staff needs would be. But um I I appreciate the desire to want to return to normal, but I think for what many people are discovering coming out of this is that um what many of us consider normal was not working for a lot of people. Um and I think that I hope that many of us will have learned a little bit from this experience and be willing to grow and change and adapt and innovate. And I think that this is perhaps one way that we can do that. Um I don't think that people are less, I mean, when people have to present at a public hearing, they have to give their name and address. I don't think there's any hiding behind that. And if they don't do that, they don't get to speak. We have every ability to mute people if they're a problem. Um I don't see that as hiding. Um and I think that it's very easy for us council people who have jobs that allow us to appear here and cars that drive us here presumably and legs that carry us upstairs. Um but not everyone in our community has those things and I don't think it's appropriate for us to say that it's easy for people to come in. And I think it's not appropriate for us to say that if someone can't get here, that their opinion is not valid.
Thank you, Eileen. Uh my comments on this, I I personally, I feel, I think that we should keep the Zoom going so that uh the public can be informed. But I don't, I I feel that if they have a uh a topic to speak on or if it's a public hearing, um I think they should come in in person if there's a special circumstance. Maybe can we can work something out there. Um but in general, uh you know, my overall goal is to try and try to make what we do, the discussions that we have, the work and the agenda items that we have before us are open to the public as much as possible. And I feel that by electronic means, that gives another opportunity for people to sit in their living room, bathroom, whatever, and be able to watch the council meetings and or commission and and board meetings. Um I do also take into consideration uh the staffing that it would require for the commissions and boards. And so if it did come down to just council, I would be okay with that. And the commissions and boards in general are not as strict, I would say, in terms of Robert's rules and public hearing, at at least from my experience and what I've seen. Um and so there's a little bit more opportunity for uh public discussion or a specific discussion at some of those commissions and boards. So um I think what this overall discussion does is it opens up the larger question and I I don't mean to delve into it tonight by any means, but I do want to mention it. I think at very soon here, we should start looking at public input during council meetings and how that late, how that's going to work itself out here. Um you know, coming out of the pandemic, using, doing everything by electronic means and now working back into an in-person uh schedule, um this gives us a good opportunity and a good time uh in the next month or two or three. uh, in the next month or two or three or whatever it takes here to really figure out what would be appropriate in terms of being allowing the public to speak at our council meetings. I think we've all heard as council members complaints about not being able to speak at council meetings. And in general, and I'm going to throw the eight hundred pound gorilla out there, I think all of us as council members are afraid of that going off the rails. We don't want meetings going till midnight every night. We put a lot of work in before the meetings, during the meetings. We don't necessarily want a council meeting to last until twelve thirty AM. We also don't necessarily want it turning into the Wild West all of a sudden because we've got people coming in discussing items that are not of pertinence to that specific meeting, and so tho- those are the things I would, uh, um, be wary of, but at the same time, I am really in support of allowing the public to speak at, uh, council meetings in the future. So I know that's a a side note, but staff will take notes on this and and we can discuss it at a later date, so, thank you.
So the consensus I'm hearing is that for council meetings will provide some electronic opportunity for people to observe the meeting. And for the and for the committee meetings and commission meetings, that's not necessary. So it could be the web, either web-based or Zoom. And of course, this isn't written in stone. If we want to change it after, we'll we'll operate for a little while. If you want to change it, then we can make those changes later.
Thank you for bringing that up during your comments, Steve.
And I appreciate one's comments. Thank you.
I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of the city council who are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Tonight, we will have a public hearing. For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, and then I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the council.
The first public hearing is item two point one to consider consider amended business assistance and subsidy to BCS Automotive Enterprises LLC.
Yeah, we'll have Lucy McMartin from Community Development.
Uh, thank you, mayor and members of council. Uh, the community development department began working with BCS Automotive, actually, uh, in the summer of twenty twenty, and we came to agreements as they were looking to, uh, relocate the Winona facility to Auburn, New York, or relocate the Auburn, New York facility to Winona. We were able to tap into both the Port Authority and a state Minnesota investment fund loan program. And when we're cl- complete completing those applications, we have to develop a business assistance agreement to say exactly how many jobs, how many, uh, what the wage goal is, among other things. So as you can imagine, during this process, especially with a automotive supplier, things change quickly. So what ended up happening is BCS Automotive anticipated a layoff, and they thought they would then be rehiring employees a few months later. Luckily for Winona and for all of those workers, they were able to continue work on their Ford F-150 products and did not have to experience a layoff. Uh, and if they did, it would have have been for a few days. So community development staff, uh, Nick Larson and all of us worked with the state of Minnesota to come up with the new job goals and projections. That means that we need to amend the business assistance agreement numbers. Um, basically, it avoided a layoff and created a higher number of, uh, higher paying jobs. So with that, before you, uh, we have a public hearing and a resolution, uh, that would allow the mayor and clerk to execute the appropriate agreements to modify this.
Thank you, Lucy. I will now open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Again, I will ask, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? And last one, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Public hearing is closed.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution and accept the three attachments of the amended agreement, the loan agreement, and the resolution itself.
I, Pam, I second that.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Pam. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, this has been, uh, you know, a long process for BCS and uh, the Port Authority, of course, uh, is very supportive of this action tonight, and I just was simply just like to credit uh, the management group of BCS and their bargaining unit, uh, labor union that they have. They all work together to help bring this project to fruition, and, uh, it's, uh, very, very good for the city of Winona.
Very good. Thank you, George. Any other comments? I'd like to say that in reading through the changes that were made, uh, due to the lack of layoffs and then also the labor union agreement, um, I know there are some changes in the wages that will be paid, but from my understanding, what it looks like is that any reduction in wages would have been made up in other benefits, and so their their overall package of compensation is going to be very similar, if not identical, to what it was in the first agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct, that, uh, while they were negotiating the union contract, the preference preference was to have more of the benefits included, um, so the mixture of the cash, wage, and benefits did change. Uh, with the benefits, uh, the lowest tier is, uh, at twenty or more with the benefits. Um, so those were the changes that were made.
And I I I would like to echo George and and say that I'd like to credit the BCS Automotive Group for being able to, um, I should say, for giving us the opportunity to keep them here. Um, that is, I think, a huge boon to the community. Um, that number of jobs, and even though it's going to be hard to fill those jobs, I think all employers are looking for employees right now. Um, that is something that, uh, the city of Winona can hang their hats on, so thank you to community development as well for working through that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll be moving, uh, agenda item five point one, consideration of extending into a contract with BKV to conduct a space needs study for future public safety building. We'll be moving that up to the frontier.
And then the reminder.
Yes, and, uh, reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
So going to new business, item five point one is the consideration of entering into a contract with BKV Group to conduct a space needs study for the future public safety building.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to execute the agreement with AKV Group and two thousand thousand general contingency fund.
Steve Young will second. We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then moving back to the petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is the liquor license renewals for twenty twenty one. I would note that the handy corner owner has paid the delinquent real estate and will be paying the water bill tomorrow. We are still awaiting, uh, the insurance certificates for those four licensees.
I, Michelle Alexander, make approval of the request for the renewals of the license fees contingent on receipt of all necessary documentation.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point two is the application for an on sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Lucky's on Third.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve that liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point three is the application for off sale three two malt liquor license for for the I Mart.
George motions to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion by George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Uh, mayor, just, uh, one comment.
Go ahead, George.
Now, this is going to be the Freedom Store that has been closed for going on almost two years. That is going to be reopening now as I Mart.
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point four is a request for a premises permit for lawful gambling for the Wire Club to be used at the VFW.
George moves to approve that request for the gambling permit.
Second.
We have a motion by George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point five is the premises permit for lawful gambling for the Goodview Winona Hockey Association to be used at Market Street Tap.
George moves to approve that, uh, gambling request.
Second.
Motion by George, second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point six is a Winona State University homecoming request.
Second.
Which one was that? No, me too.
We'll take it, George, we'll take you on that one. So Georgian, uh, George made the motion, Eileen seconded. Any comments or discussion?
It's a very good parade, fun parade.
Thank you, George. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes on the fun parade.
Item three point seven is a Goodview Gallup street closure request for Saturday, August twenty first.
Michelle would move approval. Second.
Uh, Michelle made the motion, Eileen seconds. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
And Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point eight is a request to close Lake Park Drive by Windcraft for their company picnic on Saturday, July seventeenth.
I make a motion to approve that request.
I second that. I second that.
We have a motion by Eileen, a second from Eileen, or a second from Pam, I'm sorry. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point nine is a request for stop signs on Mill Street at intersections with Olmsted and Grand, and the staff recommendation is to not introduce the ordinance or to deny.
I, Miss Alexander, make a motion to deny the attached ordinance.
Steve Young, second. Uh, motion by Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
You know, I've 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 talked to engineering on it, and, um, they're not recommending it. I drove it today. It's 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 quiet. Of course, it's always quiet when when you actually drive it, you know, it'd be it'd be busy all the other times. Um, this runs counter to to what we what we typically do. Uh, I've been told that the traffic volume is is, uh, is quite low. And, um, uh, so, uh, again, engineering is is recommending we we not, um, approve this, and and I just think that's the the direction we should go. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Nay.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point ten is a request to remove a parking stall on Mark Street.
George moves to introduce the attached ordinance.
Pam, seconds.
We have a motion by George, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point eleven is a request for speed limit reduction on Lake Park Drive, and there is a resolution for your consideration.
I, Michelle, would make a motion to introduce the tax ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yeah, I I think this is a very good idea, and I think that, uh, it's been long coming, and we've we've heard about it for a while, and I think it's people that already go a respectful speed are not going to notice the difference than people who who go way too fast. I hope they'll stop.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just say that that I think what our our hope is, is that we can convince those that are thinking that that, uh, taking a a a quick detour, possibly a way too fast detour through Lake Park in in an effort to avoid the, uh, the Huff and Sarnia, uh, intersection there, particularly when it's crowded, that we're trying to dissuade them from doing that, that 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 we feel that's inappropriate, potentially dangerous. As our information said, just so the public understands, we've had people going upwards of fifty miles an hour through Lake Park.
Two people over sixty-five.
Okay, all right, and so that's got to, that's got to end.
Yeah.
This is an effort to convince people that that's not an acceptable detour.
Thank you, Steve. And there were comments, questions? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead, George. Go ahead, George.
All I know is I heard from city employees that work in that area that, uh, the speed sometimes gets really, really high, so it's a protection not only for the people but for the employees working in that area.
Thank you, George. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Aiden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point twelve is the license agreement for the Boats and Bluegrass Event.
I make a motion to approve the license agreement and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Erin.
I'm Eileen.
Darn it. A motion from Eileen, a second from Erin. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point thirteen is a request from the Main Street Program for their big muddy Bruin Q event.
I, Ms. Alexander, move approval of their request and license agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, and a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Under unfinished business, item four point one is to award the contract for asphaltic materials to Henry J. Miggs LLC with a bid of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I, Ms. Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution, and how did we come out ahead this time? That's wonderful.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion? Michelle, you want to ask that question again?
No, just a statement of how lucky are we?
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
It was quite the bidding field there, one person.
That's what I mean. We still came out ahead. It's wonderful.
Okay, hearing no other comments or discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item four point two is to award the contract for the plant mixed bituminous materials to Dunn Blacktop with a bid of sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution and award the contract.
Second.
We have a motion by Eileen, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point two is the support for MWF properties at fifty-one Riverview Drive Development.
I, Ms. Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Steve Young, second.
We have a motion by Michelle, and a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point three is the MWF properties request to consent to process for the creation of a housing tax increment financing district.
I, Ms. Alexander, move approval of that request and the formation of a tax increment housing district, and the three attachments would be accepted as well.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
I do, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so I understand this will be the first TIF that we would approve for, for housing in Winona, and I, I, I think the public needs to know there is a, a good public purpose in this, and it is providing workforce housing. Affordable workforce housing is, is important. It's, it's high on, on my agenda list, high on the agenda list, I think, of this council. It's, it's needed. We currently have a zero percent vacancy in this category of, of, of housing. We are granting a TIF, and I think it's, it's, it's important that we do so. This does increase our, our tax base, and there, there is good public purpose in doing this, and, and I, I want to make sure we, we, I stated that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
And this was in support of the Port Authority as well.
Very good. Any other comments? I, I had read an article, I believe last fall, maybe even last summer, they were talking about TIF, well, actually, they were talking specifically about affordable housing, low-income housing, workforce housing, and on average, from, from what I read across the U.S., a developer of a normal property that doesn't have any restrictions on it generally is looking at a fifteen percent margin. Then, again, this is something I read, but I don't know how true it is or not, but fifteen percent for a normal development. And when you start to look at Section Eight and/or other housing option, affordability options, a lot of times that drops that margin down to about nine percent. And so in general, developers aren't necessarily looking at affordable housing projects because they're going to make less money. This is one of the tools that the city has, and again, stating it to the public, it's one of the tools that we have as a city to be able to offer the potential for some savings to help encourage developers to get into some of those projects that they wouldn't necessarily normally be able to make as much money on. So in that respect, I think this is a good move by us to offer a TIF to a housing development. Eileen?
I just, I know we have Lucy and Nick here, and just wanted to see if they had anything they wanted to mention about this.
Sure.
Mayor and council, yeah, community development staff has been working with MWF properties for about eighteen months now and identifying different areas and telling them to bring more affordable housing. With this particular project, they'll be utilizing an underutilized commercial space downtown close to riverfront, which are all identified needs within our twenty-seven, two thousand and seven housing plan within the comp plan. So it aligns nicely with projected goals for the city and definitely meets community needs, especially when it comes to, if we look at economic expansion for our businesses and those businesses that are having difficulties finding employees, this is an opportunity for these employees to live and work in the same community that they live in. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nick. Go ahead, Pam.
I just, I just have a comment. I, I think that this sounds like a really good place to live, right down there at the foot of the, right at the foot of Huff Street, right next to the river, and I look forward to seeing the site plan to see that it's developed properly so that there are amenities and, and space for people to enjoy that place.
Thank you, Pam. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point four is the transit grant application to operate the Winona Transit Service in two thousand and twenty-two.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point five is the proposals to operate the Winona Tree and Brush Dump Site.
I, I, Pam, Ayden, move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Pam, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Just began some discussion on this. The current operator of, of the Brush Dump Site has been with us for thirty years. They were first the organizers of this, this site for the city, and I feel they have served it very, very well. Now, you know, we go out for a request for, you know, for proposals, and, you know, as I look at, at the request that we have, is that the people bidding for this, they know the exact concrete number that the current operator receives for operating expenses. As far as, you know, the yard with the pickup loads and the bag of leaves and all that, and, yeah, you know, they're all pretty much alike as to what they charge for it, except for some of the larger loads, there may be a difference in it. But as I look at this, if I was bidding this job, and I happen to see what the current operator, what the operating cost that the city gives them, it's very easily for me to go and bid against that number. I could bid it five thousand less, ten thousand less, whatever. I think maybe now that the operator, maybe that is currently holding it, maybe they should have an opportunity to go ahead and say, hey, let me rebid this. You folks all knew my number, and I know, like I said, this is a concrete number. This is what it is. It was very easy to bid against that number when you know it. Businesses keep an eye on one another. We all know that. We all kind of watch to see what everyone's doing. I feel over the years, they provided a good service. I have not really heard any major complaints about this. The biggest complaint that I heard is that they were not grinding up the brush pile down there. I go down, I see, yes, the brush pile is ground up, you know, area is looking very, very nice. I'm going to support our current operator that is in there right now.
Thank you, George. Mayor, Erin, I'd like to, I'd like to piggyback on, on his comments a little bit. I feel it's been successfully operated for quite some time by a local business. I too feel that we go with the current operator, and.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I have a question. I, I agree that, excuse me, the company that's been operating our Tree and Brush site has been doing an excellent job, but I don't see their name listed as a company that submitted a bid. Were they invited to submit a bid?
Correct. It's.
Minnesota Wood Recyclers.
Minnesota Wood Recyclers.
Oh, okay, so.
Right. And it's true. I mean, everybody knows what the city budgets for the, for this, but that's just the public way that it has to be done.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that we have a public process for a reason, and we need to be conscientious about our city's budget. I, I'm sad that our, you know, that they didn't come in with the winning bid, but we do the same process for every project that we do, and these contracts are two years, so we could come back in two years and go back to that company.
Thank you, Eileen. Any other comments or discussion? Go ahead, Pam.
I just, I feel that the difference between the two bids is quite appreciable. Those council has turned down projects for much less money than, than is accounted for here. So I, I think that we need to go with a lower bid. Also, I find that sending the wood waste to Excel Energy is a really responsible way to generate energy, and I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, Pam. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Nay.
Rapinski.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Item five point six is the Bay State Milling recreational easement agreement for the Riverfront Trail.
I, Ms. Alexander, move approval.
I, Pam, Ayden, second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
I, I would like to point out the, the great work that was done by Chad and Lucy and, and our city attorney to get this done, and I think Brian probably had a hand in it as well. So it was a real team effort. This is the first easement, I believe, we got done for this, for this Riverfront Trail extension. The, the next ones, we hope, will go a little bit easier, but each one is going to present its own set of challenges, but we learned a lot going through this process. And again, just really want to point out the great work that was done by staff to get this one passed.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, Michelle.
Please, Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. I just echo what Steve Sarvey said. I think our staff worked amazingly well with Bay State. I also want to thank Bay State. Not only did they build a very attractive building that fit in with the requirements we had for our downtown, but they, without fail, threw this up there as part of the deal to allow us to have a portion of our Riverfront Trail, which is a, a really wonderful thing for a business to do. So I'm very appreciative to them that we're now finalizing that agreement and getting it on the books so we can continue on with our Phase One project for that Riverfront Trail.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we are to item seven point one, council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with council member Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity yesterday to ride with the Winona Police Department in the parade, and a lot of very, very good positive comments coming from the children, the parents. Good job. Thanks for protecting us. You folks are good. Keep up the good work. It was very, very good to hear that from the residents of the city along the parade route. Outside of that, thank you to the Steamboat Days Committee. You did a heck of a good job, as you always do, and look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Council member Alexander.
I don't really have anything except for to say happy Fourth of July. Can you believe that's here already? But, but happy Fourth of July. If I don't, I can't remember when our next meeting is, but I feel like the Fourth of July happened somewhere before or after. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, I'll say it again with fireworks, okay? I'll do it again. Okay, I'll say it again with fireworks, okay? I'll do it again.
There you go. Uh, Councilmember Ayden.
Well, I hesitate to bring this up, but I would like to, I would like to suggest that all property owners clean up their garbage. I've had several reports in my neighborhood of rental properties, the two that I'm talking about, rental properties where there's, the garbage cans are overspilling, and in this latest heat wave, that is really obnoxious. That's an obnoxious sight, and it's an obnoxious smell. So I would like to suggest that if that's happening near you, you should call the city inspections department. So there is a, there is a remedy, but meanwhile, let's clean it up.
Thank you, Pam. That's a double thank you on that one. Councilmember Mueller.
Uh, Great River Shakespeare Festival opens this weekend. Its outdoors are so grateful to city staff for helping the festival navigate the use of Levy Park. There is a beautiful stage down there, and it's all outdoors this year, so they will be at the mercy of the weather, but every, it's starting, it's happening, and, yeah, see you down there.
Thank you. Councilmember Young.
Twin Cities Chicago Second Train Update. And if you don't like the idea of a second train, you can just view it as a nineteen million dollar upgrade for Winona for our tracks and, and switching equipment. I, I think you guys may know just real quick, our legislature went into a second session. We hoped it would be passed through the regular session. It, it was not. It has passed out of committee. It is, so the the ten million dollar in matching funds that Minnesota has to provide to match, to, to unlock the federal granting and match what Wisconsin has already done, Go Wisconsin, has been adopted, put into the, the transportation bill. That has passed out of committee. We feel we're close, but it ain't done till the governor signs it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for the update, Steve. Councilmember Rapinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to thank the Winona community publicly for their support of Steamboat Days, coming out in the parade and so on. Also want to just remind everybody that the fireworks obviously was postponed last night, and the fireworks will happen this evening at ten PM. Same time, same place, but tonight at ten o'clock.
So put the earmuffs on your dogs tonight.
If your dog is afraid of fireworks.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. There are four items. The approval of the minutes from June seventh, the final adoption of an ordinance to establish one-hour parking on Fifth Street, the ordinance to establish four-way stop at Highway, excuse me, Seventh and High Forest and Eighth and High Forest, that's by WK School, and a claim against the city by Nancy Wood.
Ms. Alexander moves approval of the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, the time now being seven thirty, and there being no further bid to come before this council evening, we do now adjourn.
George will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. We'll vote by roll call.
For the last time, by roll call.
Yes.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
And Rapinski.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Welcome back to the next one, everybody.
Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, July sixth.
July sixth.